June eighteen. Oh, sorry, Seth.
Sorry, you're all set.
All right, this is June eighteen. And do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Do I move?
Second.
We'll do a second one if I actually. Just can't feel those in favor.
Hi.
All right, we have any walk-ins that's not on the yes. I'll already finish coming up and. Yep, very interesting about me and Anderson for the record.
I'm Martine Taffey, it's fifty two Rebecca Row.
You can sit down or whatever, yeah.
Um, and I'm here on behalf of the Cedar Point Association just to get an update. We put it on the study for the law. When you might have the studies completed. And we might be able to win on it. You have one more question?
Sure. Yeah, I'll check with Sean.
Trying to help makes sense. Sorry, trying to help.
Sorry. All right, so on that, we're gonna get the DPW. Sean, I don't know exactly where. So let's go to the second question.
Um, the second one is really just on. How are where the seawall that's really taking a lot of damage over the winter? There are massive, massive slab, maybe a couple of them table or longer. That are even on it or one huge one fell down and was like rocked up like that for a long time. So we're really just wondering. It'll take some time to get the seawall prepared, but what what matters is to be the same.
You guys forget to call the tape, any problem, I'll do it, I'll take care of it, otherwise you're only going to touch the seawall. But I'll be there for thousands of people. I'll find out from Sean where it is last time I talked, I'll get it closely. Will you pay a portion of it? Not to decide whether to see all, but I'll find out from Sean on the web. There's a particular area that we need to look at, they should just email Sean or put out there with that.
Yeah.
Also towards the Jenny or further up.
If you're looking at the main staircase, maybe four or five thousand down. And then there, and then just as you're walking, there's big, you know, cracks and see how many. And one of them really tall.
So I'll stop some Sean, okay, well, part of the problem is we have the easiness to get into that fix. We can't access it, we're going through those properties, but we'll start about without taking. All right.
Well, I think everybody signed those. So they're all.
We'll start now, so Sean's the engineer, that stuff. So then, so the immediate issue that we'll make to make a step fix.
Yeah, yeah, not happening. Not doing that, I think enough till we go. Right near San Hills. Yeah, let's find out, Adam.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then we'll just follow up on the study then.
Yeah, just tell your contact and we'll see you.
Okay, great.
Run into our, but. And we've moneyed the way.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, there's a lot.
That's a little tretros right there.
All right.
Okay.
Any else have a book?
Yeah, I can't sleep. Okay. Back up. Okay. Non-ayer. Yeah, so maybe it's. Well, that is.
All right.
That's like saying.
That work.
That's very good.
That's hard.
Uh, one thing I did forget to do, um, I apologize for that, we're sorry. Read our, uh, our statement, sorry about that. The Citrus Land Board has admitted providing an environment and respect their meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all of our descendants. Will we marginalize and marginalize communities to be welcomed and respected? Ask our committee members and all of the constituents in this, we stand in support and respect our community. And with that, we're gonna move to, uh, report of the time of the script. Evening, thank you, hope we're able to get through the hot day today, nice to cool again. Uh, just reminding people tomorrow, June nineteenth to June thirtieth. Town Hall, Council on Asian and Library will be closed tomorrow. Uh, the transfer stations also closed, but they're closed on Wednesday anyway, so it's not a special closure. Transfer stations closed tomorrow. Water update for the week, Jack, Jack, two pounds of plus two, down from two point five last week. Reservoirs plus two, also down two point five last week. Rainfall the last seven days, one point eight one inches in the river at the plant. Comnea for the last week, one point four million gallons per day down sludge from last week's one point four two seven. Reminder, next Monday, special time meeting, June twenty four, seven p.m. on the high school gym. The agenda is slow to the water treatment plant bid overage, we'll talk about that in a bit. The next couple of days are gonna be unseasonably hot, even if temp is reaching into ninety. What day, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Tom Villas will be open normal hours, Library drills at nine o'clock. Council on Asian and Town Hall is at four thirty. President's place to cool off tomorrow, the Council on Asian will be open eight thirty to four thirty. Only as a cooling center, no programs, no lunches. They have to go through the June, June, July holiday. We have volunteers who are certain team by the bottom of there, so we'll open eight thirty to four thirty. Keep the volunteers a little long, try to keep them. Depending on the day we have, we have tomorrow. Uh, it's getting to that time of the hot weather, July fourth is coming. Uh, public safety departments will be posting July fourth updates and notices for the holiday. Uh, right out of the gate, they want to let people know that consumption of alcohol in a public way. Public property or beach is not legal, under this consumption of marijuana. Underage consumption of marijuana or alcohol is strictly prohibited, will be enforced. Beaches will be monitored for stockpiling of pallets and other combustibles. Fireworks, including sparklers, are illegal in Massachusetts. Bonfires are not allowed, you can have a small cookie fire, the dimensions of that are available on the website. Parking is only allowed in designated areas and in town beaches with sticker. We also want to let voters know that July third to July sixth, this operation Dry Water. It's a year-round voting under the Influence Awareness Enforcement Campaign. Misses reduce the number of alcohol and regulated incidents and fatalities, increase recreational motor awareness. Bifrosting gets stronger, more visible, determine the alcohol use from the water. That will be done in conjunction with the Ops, the Pills God, State Police, Biomechanical Police, and Sister Power Mass's office. Paving repair wood tray for the pipe project, the schedule to commence on Monday, July eighth. Million grinding, paving commencing on Monday, July fifteenth, following the week. Tom Clark wants to remind people that twenty twenty dog tags are now available, all dogs are requiring license every year in the town of Situate. And dog licenses from the previous year expire June thirty. Maintain a license by mail, please include a self-addressed, letter-sized stamped envelope. Online or personal, on Clark's office. Cross my spade, new dog is ten dollars. Dog for male, female, not sex is fifteen dollars. Corry Mile, our postal management office will be hosting another public information session. Recap the beach nursery project that was recently completed on the most situated beach. Information session will be a presentation for the engineers that designed the project. They'll provide an overview of the construction details and what the next steps are. It's been an online Zoom meeting on June twenty seventh at six p.m. Logging details can be found on Cory's page on the postal police office. Want to remind people the Purple Dais, still the most renovations. Probably have the five to six weeks work there, weather permitting, community preservation project. Replace existing playground structure with updated equipment, tail end pages children two through five. About this time, the playground will not be accessible. We will be putting down the rubber back flooring. Probably next week or so, it's gonna look like it's done, it's not. Not going until that playground is over, we're gonna destroy that floor, so please stay out of there until we open that back house. The Harbor Master wants people to know that Woods Hole Group will be working the harbor starting the week of June twenty fourth doing core sampling. We refrigerated truck and a coring boat in the harbor. It's a part of the process that we're working through to obtain our trash refineries direct at Situate. The water health is now sampling beaches as they do annually under Massachusetts Department of Public Health regulations. Beaches, beach operators must sample bathing water at all public beaches for bacteria each week. Using the entero caucus indicator orgasm, orgasm. Out of the regulation, beach sampling is conducted weekly during the swim season, which is the third week of June and Labor Day. Six beaches sampled, uh, Amarok, Peggy, San Hills, Egypt, Lighthouse, Minut. Uh, the results are posted with them on the water health page, on the town news and on the town of Situate Facebook page. Also next week, we'll see the first work on the Hattaway School site. First phase will work, we're digging several test picks around the school and fields to measure soil characteristics. That will form site design. Work is scheduled for June twenty sixth to twenty eighth. See construction equipment, some back goes digging holes. At the end of the day, those holes will be filled in, so please stay away from those vehicles during their work for safety reasons. Uh, we will update some of that project as the summer goes along. Today was the beach training down at Peggy Beach for all our lifeguards. Beach will be staffed beginning tomorrow, June nineteenth, just the time of hot weather. In addition, the Recreation Department wants to remind town residents that Situate owns four beach wheelchairs. Available for Egypt, Peggy, Amarok, and Minut Beaches. My chair is stored at the Recreation Department, requires transportation of beach and back. So you need to call the Recreation Department, sign that, or have the other ones available at the beach. Sister Cities, Santa Academy, the Defogo Cape Verde Committee will be hosting their second annual Cape Verde Independence Day celebration. Uh, Friday, July fifth, from six p.m. to ten p.m. at the Community Building, forty-four Jerrymere Road. To commemorate Father Brody's forty-ninth anniversary of independence, of course. Uh, last year that was a great event, well attended, we'll see more people this year. Questions to follow our office. That's with these sister cities and Cape Verde. Water replacement project on Jerica Road is still moving along, they're in the vicinity right now of the boat ramp, we can't get to the boat ramp. Can't go through at the boat ramp, street matching, uh, area fair for the folks. Depending on where they are, they may or may not be working the weekend before July, hoping they just want to take that off. Update people back, come along, we will see delays, people, but that work was on. Town is hosting another online auction of circles, items from both the town and school departments. The auction is currently live on Auctions International, can be accessed to be in town, link on the website. The auction will be made over until Monday, June twenty fourth, a lot of this stuff on there, we got very well below, so if you have interest, please log on and take a look that we have. The X-rayed lighthouse work is substantially completed, it's been out painted and scraped. Uh, installation of lighting, lighting protection and the dehumidifier material is still coming along. The installation of new LED light will take place with a rise in script and drive later on this week. The Sharks Society is pending set on August seventh, National Lighthouse Day. As they are celebrating the renovation, since you would like, we'll provide more details in the second explosion. Uh, finally, again, the food pantry is paid for for your support. We do keep seeing an increase in clients. Most needed items at this point, canned chili, mixed vegetables, cranberry juice, brick bread mash, raisin peanut, red and white beans, sloppy joe, spam. Yellow cake mix, yellow pudding cups, and bowls. This can be dropped off, the food pantry during operating hours, vintage, man, the old eight school. Situate Library Village, Mike, and Shaw's also collecting for the group. That's what I had up today. Excellent. Questions? Sorry, so yes.
Um, this girl, I'm sure I missed her. There is. And did you say that there's a possibility of outrun, not being successful?
The boat ramp is accessible, you can't go through. I saw some people trying to pull into the boat ramp and go through the boat ramp, walk the other side. Boy, the detail, but you can't access the boat ramp.
People will be.
Yeah.
Good. I'm glad I missed her.
Today you might have to come in next to Pier Forty-four, probably. Tomorrow, Thursday, you might have to go around the Barker and down Barker again. Be relaxed.
All the people, details.
There are signs and details, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the, uh, the date for the lighthouse re-living is no longer effective. It's August seventh. You know, skeptical, but.
No, I'll take no chances.
I'm. Plants are moving along and people will be hearing about it very soon. But, um, I suggest to people that there's not a lot of room on a lighthouse point for too many people. However, there are plenty of vantage points all around the harbor that we want to see. The light, the first guest, that up in. There's plenty of pit lists to see around the park, so, um, but we want this to be a great celebration for, uh, for the town. And we were lucky enough to be featured in some soaking bags, uh, next to the other, so the sea helmet. Plus the Situate Chamber, plus the economic development committee, plus these Situate. It's more exciting, it's more people working in lots with, you know, public size, this big event. I'm just picturing this.
The only thing I just want to add, to kind of piggyback, if no one has ever used one of those mobility chairs. Or relative to the mobility issue. It is absolutely, it'll change, best summer, it's a best day. Highly recommended if you have a family member, computer yourself, use it. You get, you do, it's awesome, so please take advantage of that, it'll be awesome, great. Uh, memories. Um, all right, with that, we are moving on. Uh, next on the agenda, we want to talk about. Tom Doyle. Who's the chief? Mark, come on up. Tom Doyle, this is his twenty, twenty-five year service in a first three, I could go through and list everything. But I think it'd be better. How are you?
I'm good, how are you? Um, yeah, Tom Doyle was, um, like one Situate resident, uh, nineteen ninety-nine, joined the, uh, DPW. Side of the, uh, I mean, department worked for Mike Green. Um, after some persuasion from a Situate firefighter, uh, who's also a fellow Situate High School classmate. He may not be my brother, um, Tom, he got his basic, uh, EMT certification and, uh, soon after became certified paramedic. Um, Tom was poached, um, poached from the DPW, um, by a then fire chief, um, and Hurley. Uh, as Tom puts it, they were feeding north Situate Village, um, one, one afternoon and Hurley stopped by and told to report to station one at seven thirty Monday morning. And he did, um. Tom's professionalism along with his comical demeanor, a senior medic physician, a senior medic, um, senior paramedic. Mentored his, um, young param, or new paramedics. Um, uh, and, and as they come along and he supervises him and he basically mentored them until he was appointed for their, um, their profession. Uh, so he's done a great job of that. Uh, when Tom works Sundays, he's gone to the firehouse kitchen preparing breakfast for the entire shift. Uh, he's got a great sense of humor, he's a pleasure to work with, uh, he's currently assigned to Station Four, uh, currently a citizen of the Commonwealth. Quite fierce, really.
That's quite unbelievable for all that everyone to be a parent, I mean, talk about in crisis, first person to see someone. Uh, it's just. Yeah, everyone, thank you for work with a sense of humor. And kind heart. I couldn't get any. Hey, anyone want to say anything or, uh?
If I just, I think it's an extraordinary service and quite, quite a good representation of what, um, we are grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Very brave.
Did he grab the hammer?
Yeah, I, 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 I. I would need to reset it now. All right, thank you very much.
All right, next, we have, uh, administrator named Bolt, give a water treatment plan. One day. Update.
There's a key line, prepare screen key, give that thing. So as we discussed at the last meeting. I wanted to, and Julie wanted to bring you up to the speed of what we had been able to do together to mitigate the impact of the original cost. Because I don't finish the cost for water treatment, depending on the actual time meeting on Monday. Uh, right now, this is the final funding for the board's goal tonight. The current funding from reserves would be three point six million dollars, water enterprise catering, the cap of water enterprise, capital stabilization fund, free cash, capital stabilization fund, and stabilization fund in itself. From other available funds, um, about one point nine million, and that includes the Tom Brothers Water and Sewer Funds, the Wicker Bag and Model Fund, and the Solar Ringer Model Fund, and the Chalk Mill. Both of those have been decreased. Um, from investment income, and from the, from the NASAP funds and also from the county funds, those are both also been increased. They reflect the interest that was, um, reported for May. Unspent capital articles is one point nine million, and then just sort of scroll through the different screens showing the articles. You can see there's a, um, good number of them. And we do, this is part of our capital plan every year, but, um, due to the disparity in situation, people who were being moved on, willing to let go of something, let go. So the original estimate for project was two hundred fifty-five dollars over a thirty-year period for a total estimated impact of seven thousand six hundred forty. And that is based on a two point four percentage, which is the mass clean water cost percentage. Because we are housing tourist community, because of the NDTA legislation, our percentage goes down to one point nine percent. So right now, with all of these other sources, the borrowing has been reduced to the last report from thirteen million to twelve point eight. Um, the current estimated additional annual impact for taxpayer for the additional cost is forty dollars. So instead of being two fifty-five, it will be two ninety-five every year over thirty years. And that's total of an additional four hundred dollars to, um, a taxpayer over the next thirty years. So, um, what are the other things that might play into this? If just six million dollars of the project, uh, was considered to be TCAS related by the DEP and Clean Water Trust and not skip out the amount that is. The architectural value of that treatment option, that would bring the impact down to thirty-two dollars. So that's zero percent there for us, and the more project that, um, the DEP will consider TCAS. Contributed, according to creating TCAS will help us, then just that six million will bring it down to eight dollars. So we're just wanting to bring that out, we don't know yet, so our number is forty. But that's just to show the impact of that for the force, we're trying to get as much as possible of the total borrowing costs to be considered for zero percent each month. So what are the other sources that potentially could mitigate from the impact taxpayers? The TCAS stabilization fund, we didn't mention this at the last meeting. We had established it at the October twenty twenty-three second town meeting, similar to the opioid settlement funds, there is a TCAS settlement as well. We have not received any funds, but we did set up a stabilization fund. Kevin was able to get, Kevin, the deep area director was able to get some guidance from the, um. Actual attorneys involved in that suit, they estimate that Situate will receive between one point eight and two million dollars in settlement funds. How we'll get that as a lump or like opioid over a period of years, we don't know yet. Um, the funds based on a family vote will automatically go into TCAS stabilization fund. So as subsequent family, after we receive the funds, we can vote for five of the project. If we got it all at once, that's another nine to ten dollars that we reduce the annual impact as to where it was. So that was something we can have any information about, so that's a, a certainly a great source and a specific TCAS that can be applied to this project. Other potential sources that could impact, um, that could impact taxpayers. Additional Aqua Funds from the county commissioners, maybe one million dollars additional in other funds, such as our funds or any other grant. Will reduce the impact by five dollars annually, and that's annually, not just once, not just a quarter years, every year. Um, but it reduces the overall borrowing. Any additional funding from state federal partners? Um, but any additional mitigation that happens at future town meetings from other articles, free cash for lawyer and private catering. This project isn't going to issue all of a sudden and we're gonna borrow all the money and start paying it back. Um, that's not the way this works in the Clean Water Trust, and we'll speak to that in the next slide. And also, I don't want to forget to mention the unused, if there's any unused EDP mandated contingency funds. So the project has a five percent contingency required by the Department of Environmental Protection, uh, two point nine million, any unused contingency savings. So the NAS Clean Water Trust, who's the state agency through whom this project is being financed, so we're not issuing our own bonds, we're going with the state revolving fund. Has just notified all the borrowers of the trust that the EDP will not be issuing any debt until February twenty twenty-five. So the first time this would even appear on a tax bill would be in fiscal twenty-six, which begins in July twenty twenty-five. And even then, Clean Water Trust only brings in the amount that we can spend it. So we've only expended just over a million dollars so far. So even if this was to show up on fiscal twenty-six tax bill because we got swept into a hole, it's going to be a small impact. And it's likely that this would be something that will walk its way up to the two hundred ninety-five, um, total impact. As Clean Water Trust, as I said, will only pull in what we spend, and it's gonna take us multiple years to build the project. And it's when they decide to bond, not when we decide bond, so we don't have money sitting in the bank. We'll pay the bills, then we'll go to them for reimbursement, and then they will reimburse us. Uh, the good news is, as we go through that process, yes, we have to upfront the money, but we don't have to pay for our permanent list. So with that, we're gonna adhere as a cost to taxpayers. So in summary, as presented for, um, the town meeting on Monday, the estimated initial tax going to be forty dollars for the taxpayer. Um, when the TCAS settlement funds come in, they can be applied to project at a subsequent town meeting. Depending on how they come in, you may have to apply them multiple times if they come in over a period of years. Um, if at least six million of the project costs is down to the three people's TCAS treatment, that could potentially save eight dwellers per year and that's a hit. So we're not counting on it, we want it, but we're not counting on it. Um, if any additional funds come from the county commissioners, they have savings of about five dollars for every million dollars, or from any other source. And any unspent portion of the DEP mandated two point nine contingency funds could also reduce the overall impact.
The, uh. We had a few meetings of this at the, thank, first of all, thank you for bringing that together, I know that, uh, available proposed to see. Uh, we had a few meetings today at the Cedar Center, there was a lot of really good questions. Uh, one thing, one thing I want to mention that I, I kept telling everyone, uh, thirty dollars. I still see it for thirty dollars because we're now much more sure. And understand the settlement money, uh, that is coming in. The exact date, we don't know, uh, we have a much better sense of that coming, it's less than thirty dollars, and again, it's. Zero percent, so I want people to. To think of us for, uh, change where we are, but with that. Questions here, questions at home?
So first of all, that's the first time I've seen the average total cost of Situate is nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. It was eight fifty last Christmas, based on what we thought was wasted. Have I missed that?
Exactly, we're talking about school, maybe just because I.
Um. I was, I was a little confused about this slide and as the principal, um, the difference targets. And. The third column, I don't understand why it puts a column out in the third column, is different than revised number?
I, I think, is that the one that says forty-nine, really just explain that, if you add them together? It's the six million.
There are two, there are two phrases right.
And I'm not putting that back up on screen because I don't want to accuse anybody else.
Okay, no, I just wanted to.
It's six million that deserves, so it's two.
All right. All right. Okay, then, oh, no, thank you. And thank you to my colleagues, Mr. Richard McHarris, for going today. Oh, I care.
I went to the first session. Make people think I'll create us.
Yeah.
I'm very proud that our board has been made accessible.
Yeah, we're talking.
Two sessions.
We're twenty-five week.
You know, and a lot of good questions, yeah. And I do want to note that, that the, there's a banner on the homepage of the town website. That used to be a red banner on the schools, we're discussing it now, there's a red banner that we want to add information about this particular issue. If you're gonna update.
Yes.
Thank you, Andrew. I want to thank you and, uh, all people around the finance aspect of this, uh, issue. For continuing to refine and open up the opportunities to mitigate this as minimally as possible impact in track there. I also like to remind everybody that what is out and available right now is your Situate's Town Advisory booklet. And I have the pleasure to read this for the armchair quarterbacks that are all among us, around us, and asking why and how come. This is a really great representation of how we got there. And how we should not necessarily be riding each other. For the disappointment in that type of an increase. And we should rather take the solace and the benefit of. And we should rather take the solace and the benefit of the accuracy of the finance group that can really put this into an affordable perspective. Nobody likes to pay extra taxes, that's a given. But if you get a chance, check this out in advance of the town meeting. So you'll have your background and you'll know just how eccentric it is to build a plan like this. You'll know the economic conditions in the state, not just in situ, in the state, that has caused some of these things to happen. And that there's no ill intent on behalf of the town, the professionals, the advisors, everybody's here and has done the best they can do given, given the circumstances. So that's why I thought we had to comment. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, thank you, Anthony, and your view. I don't have any questions. I appreciate this, we will post this on the website with the rest of the stuff. And then can I, we also get a copy here, because I think that the backup's a little different. It's a couple.
Are you seeing a bit of imperfections?
You improved things. Right, the version I have, and I want to make sure I
We know how much I love to put things during meetings, so sure.
Yeah.
No, not now, I mean in the, not just here.
Good. Okay, so we'll open up uh any folks online or anyone, here's any questions or
I do not see any questions online.
If you're having a technical difficulties, you can't do it, email us.
Or turn on your camera and wave.
Yeah, um, so I want to try and make sure that has all the first So.
Can I?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that this is the one article on this special town meeting, so it shouldn't be a ten-hour meeting.
Too long.
Too long.
Too long.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, too long.
The main topic is, same, same topic.
Yeah, it shouldn't be.
Same topic.
Such as the old one.
Yeah, yeah, all I'm saying is, you know, it hopefully will be out by the time some goes down, yeah, given the time of year. So the current people
All right, thank you again. All right, email for questions, uh, folks, and uh, thank you.
And also Jeremy, go ahead and recommend a most
That's the next, I'm sorry. Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, we see that you have
It's the next one.
Recommendations for the town meetings assigned to the speakers. All right, so let's, let's move on to that. So.
Do you want to give a motion?
Yes, let's make a motion.
Who to recommend article one and two of two-point-four, twenty-twenty-three, special town meeting, relevant to the modern treatment plan?
Congressman Conley, those in favor? There's some, sorry, second, second Congressman Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
So the next article is to sign article one and article two. I think probably needs some discussion before because they're blank right now.
Right. Recommendations, who do we want?
Well, I have to improve myself for the inspirational because I haven't been coming in hot from my um flight and arrives and I don't want to take that responsibility and everyone's thinking like that he has some flexibility and nobody wants to be around us. I would actually like to suggest that Richard do at least article one, check his be like
I think it's your
Well, it is.
I'm happy you're interested.
Been on this case for many, many years. I think we won't be fitting if we I would say.
Now, article two.
I'm happy you're doing it.
I'm just, I think to have our vice chair and our chair take these two
I'm watching, breaking the bar.
Okay, so a little bit, Mr. Richard, did we act it though? We just assigned, we just assigned.
We were just assigned. You have been assigned, we have been assigned, yeah, I don't think you, who's gonna speak? All right. Um, wonderful.
Well, there's a scheduled motion, so I don't know why there is, we don't need to vote it.
As long as you're fine with it, that's what it's gonna be.
All right.
We hit by a bus, somebody can get a hit.
Oh, no.
Don't, don't over there, who hasn't voted. You got it. All right. Uh, now we're gonna go to, wait, I think, folks for your board, board to committee openings. So we're gonna start with Animal Control Board, Erin Kenna, you're here, come on, it's like, come on up. Price is right, we'll go to get our books. Don't worry, these are not, this is not like the process examination, really, we want to know a couple of tests. Why do you want to know? Why now? Just tell us a little, folks.
So, Melanie, I'm going to be an input to it. I'm descended from the benefit, so we've been here for a long time.
Oh.
Okay, you went.
I, I slept away for a little while, but I came back. Um, and since I came back to Situate in twenty-two thousand, I have been volunteering since you all fell there. I served, so I'm joined from board, I've seen, you know, all kinds of um animal control shoes from inside the shelter. Uh, I was very interested in the position, this is the first time that I ever applied for a shoe. Um, but I think that this fits me. Um, I myself have two dogs and four cats from the shelter. Um, I'm also taking care of my mother and her cat also from the shelter. So um, I, I, I love animals and I want to do what's best for them and the people who own them. Um, and so that's what I'm hoping to be driving.
Wow, I love that, while I look for this. Number three. We're going to let all of you, all to have you, this week coming up, super hot. We work with it, you know this, or in the shelter, how dangerous it is to these cats. You love to be careful, right?
Yes, yes, they do.
It's, it's scary, so I believe they're not, uh
Should not, they should not be left outside of shelter for annual water, obviously, just like any humans, you're not at that time, you know, shelter and park. Sorry, actually.
Questions, concerns?
I actually have a question. Uh, this year, um, we had a good appreciation for the animal control and how difficult the job is. Um, we had a, there was a really a friend or dog in town that I think it was five mornings and ultimately, the dog read the, what the recommendation was to put the dog down. And then we had to also uh clear it as well. I'm just, I'm curious, it's really hard, it's the hardest decision you would have to make. Um, just curious your thoughts on that.
Um, I agree, it's very difficult decision. Um, we made a different decision in the shelter um all the time, which is where I think that my experience here comes in. Um, we, at the shelter, um, we are, like I follow no pill shelter, but it's limited admission shelter, so we bring in animals, um, only animals, only animals that we can get dogged out. Um, but occasionally animals come in, they discover a behavioral issue or health issue. And um this whole process that we have implemented to make decisions about whether or not those animals will be utilized under the terrible standards. And it's difficult every single time. Um, nobody wants to see a animal at the town, and I know that owners are obviously have an interest in keeping their dogs, everybody thinks that they control their own animal. So, um, you know, it's, I think it's a process and you have to work both with the owners and the animals to be sure that you're making a better decision for the public and also the owner and the animal itself. I mean, I don't think any animal would tax humans for the way they exist is um a happy animal, so um
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So it's a hard job.
It is, I, I can try to understand, they do volunteer.
They obviously understand that, so thank you.
We're dog owners.
We're all dog owners, it's very difficult, but um, yeah, it's happy, it has to be invested, just to
And I'd actually been the beneficiary of the animal control officer who I think might be a little, it can be a little, kind of a little passed away last year. But before he passed away, he actually ran away from my house after a theater and somehow got trapped in the woods behind town forest, Maple Street. And the poor animal control officer, like dig his way in there, get him out, and he did that. Um, and brought my dog home to me. Um, he didn't, didn't give me a warning or anything. I do my best to keep my dogs healthy, but I appreciate all the work that everybody does for um global wildlife and the domestic. Thank you, I appreciate that.
There you go, well, I, as chair of my tribe, I get to break from tradition a little bit. Usually people, not mental, anytime, we just see, there's two, there's two openings. So I'd love to have a motion so you can leave here, how would you rule, uh, be pointed?
To the hardest job, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It was hard. So it's another
Luke to one, Karen to one, I've been the animal control board for three years, twenty-two thousand, that's our second.
All right, the, uh, Ms. Cantwell, say it, Congressman Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
I want to
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for volunteering.
Michelle will give you the instructions. By me, you know.
Have to take me, everyone, take one.
Thank you, we have Susan Heller here. Perfect, thank you. The hardest and one of the hardest working.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I can only share your experience I've had with them. Um, purifying areas, not too much. Um, however, a few years ago, when I lived in North Reading, uh, seminary, it was called a local seminary, where I was secretary. They had a patch of land that they didn't know what to do, so the secretaries got together with the head man chose, uh, seminar is Elijah Bonner. And decided that it might be nice to have a memorial um walkway or memorial section. And so the board and myself got together, we planned a certain area with the triangle shape. And then it caught on, gave them time to think about it, and planned about it. And what happened was the uh colors were blended in together, the uh family could bring whatever type of plant they wanted and put it next to each other type of thing and um put a plaque and a blotting last one, the family of the Smith family, or the number of um, the Keenan family, whatever. And it worked out very well, the only thing is the member of the family had to prune it and water it, but it ended up that you watered anyways because if you're the alien, you know, more of a uh, and that turned out very, very nicely, more of a uh, triangle level. Second one, where I was, we sit in North Reading and then wanted to have a pathway, they wanted to do something with this pathway in the back of the church. And I had already had a playground, so we did, did basically the same thing, but along the path, we had different arrangements of flowers. And um, but they had, then you wanted, the Baptist church, no offense, we had any Baptist, but we just wanted everything on it that the animal was in. And so I saw to it that the back, that where it was, and it was very lovely and there were benches and it just looked so awesome. And the third one was in Buena Mas, uh, at Gordon College. And it was at the seminary and it had a creek on the water. And beautiful little benches were there, so we had the names on the benches, on the back of the benches. So that was my experience in flowers, the way you train, I love flowers. I can't have a flower now, flower box, because I live at lots of green, I can't have flower boxes and those. But um, basically, however I can help.
I am excellent at getting a flower and adding that to
Have a die.
I am best at that, I excel at that. Questions? I have one, have you met the other people on your
No, I haven't, I only, uh, the tree only, I believe her name is Bob or somebody, she just sent me a text. Is it Barbara?
It's, it's
Oh, is she dropping down?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, it's good, yeah, I work, yeah.
And then are you aware of what the beautification commission, some of the programs they have in town? I know, I can recall that I know you, that you used to have storefront, uh, Front Street, and that's that you storefronts, uh, Front Street have a program.
They have a barrel, they have
Yeah, so you're familiar with some of that?
Yes, and and I'm familiar that Marshfield, that uh, near the street, like someone who took over the island, the island, that I, of course, I haven't been in Marshfield in thirty, thirteen years, so I don't know what's going on there, you know, watching that. Whenever Situate is open to you, I see a little more information.
Well, I appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you.
That's great, we give her most.
Yes, there's one opening and
One.
One out of the tent.
Here we go. I showed up.
You surprised.
It is a, it's a hard one.
Most of the town is so pretty and so quaint.
Not the only coach to say it, but the, sometimes the best ability is available. So I love uh people being, stepping up, so I would love a motion.
Motion to appoint Susan Heller to the beautification commission for a term of three years.
From Mr. Gilmore, second, uh, Harrison. There.
Hi.
Nice, welcome aboard.
Hey, thank you very much.
Kara.
I'll use enough water, I guess.
Yeah, no, that's
Are you? Forget it for a
All right.
No, what are you gonna do? Tell us about yourself, why do you want to do mine, what do you know, what's your age?
Um, so I am a facility researcher in the local policy area. Um, I'm doing that for about
Take a motion.
Local history policy for the last like four, five years, um, before that, uh, sort of adjacent, but um I've been doing facility research for a long time, adults, kids. Um, and, you know, it's just, research is so separate, right? Sometimes we evaluate policies and we do always think, we, we interview, reflect data, write reports, and there's not a practical application of that policy, like the people we're working with don't always do the things we're suggesting, so, you know, thinking, just trying to think of what I can do locally in my town that would, you know, impact people's lives directly instead of just writing a form of course. So that's what I, I just did. I didn't told you this.
This is like made my day. Okay, I said, I said, I'm telling you the, that starts with having that moment. It's, honestly, it's on. It's one of the most dear, my, seriously.
Yeah.
The impact you can have to be with this.
Yeah.
You put the white paper away and you see uh, my mother-in-law on the beach for the first time, it's a year, but this is, this has changed everything.
Yeah.
Do we have questions or Sarah started?
Yeah, my only question is what's the, I'm confused, what's open?
The uh Is someone, so definitely, we're even.
Is someone stepping down? Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not here. Okay. Wait, I'm sorry, recently that?
We're, we, we need someone, I just remember someone that
Okay, yeah, but that has Uh, that was my only question, because it didn't look like someone's stepping down, so I was confused.
Slide is
On page ten.
Susan, they can have up to nine members.
Yeah.
Oh, they can, okay. Gotcha, and so we have a major
Oh, right.
Okay, so this should say one of five, okay.
Oh, yeah, so we have all of them. All right, thank you for that. I just want to say, I wish everyone at home could see your resume.
Yeah, we have your resume.
So we're very I, I just, I can I'm getting my, sorry. Am I having here?
Yes.
I just, you touched on a really good I just, you, you touched on a really good point about the impact. We have been so lucky with the residents that have stepped forward and raised their hand, whatever their interest to the field. But these are extremely amazing caliber people that are, are happening in all of boards and communities. But I think everyone finds out that whatever you're special in is part of the bigger system.
Yeah.
Really can contribute a lot to this world.
Yeah.
Just so glad you brought that up. Your question goes on and on. It goes on and on.
Thank you.
Right, question?
Motion, yes. Well. So the.
Motion to approve Kara Petrick, the commission on disabilities.
Right, they said.
Petrick.
Peter.
Petrick. All right. redo. Uh, motion to approve Kara Petrick to the commission on disabilities for a term of three years.
Second, goodbye, Ms. Harrison, second, uh, Mr. Gilmore, all in favor?
Aye.
All for the board.
Thank you, thank you.
Nice. And I believe that, um, on the next, it's the same thing again. The cultural committee can have.
About twenty.
Right, so we can, the one at first that and Judy at the vote.
I'm one.
One up. Which coming on.
There you go.
Yeah, Paul, it's, again.
My, my.
All right. So Judy, who was there?
I'm good.
And Judy, come right up. So we'll start over here. Also note yourself, why, also, uh, committee.
So Brian O'Brien, maybe aware of the position and been in situ at the past year. Wanted to get a little more involved in town. I've always been involved in my hometown Connecticut. Um, first time I was really, I grew this thing where it's really, my, my job is always maybe travel a lot. So just see what a good opportunity there to get more involved.
Yeah, actually, I'm similar to Judy. I have lived, um, we moved here with my family in summer twenty twenty-one. And so now that we're a little more settled in, I also want to get more involved in the more sort of organized way. So three-year community certainly more involved, like, I would really figure things out and settle in and learn more about them. And the works and coming here was so awesome. So.
Right. Really correct. Yeah, who's been, uh, most involved there. Oh, good.
Oh, Patrice Bayes.
Yeah.
It's very active. I'm disappointed. It's a good, you need to, you don't contribute as much or as such times you have allows. I know you're very, you're, so.
And, and the one that we're talking about, uh, a little bit, I think we probably need to do a better job is kind of some cross pollination between beautification, cultural committee, the, who, whoever helped coordinate that. And Patrice really helped that, um, coordination and having some of this, um, events downtown, the artists and everything. That was.
It's funny because I started, I wanted to meet Patrice in my role of her work because, um, she is an meeting that I was on. Wow, I mean, to meet with her, so I said, I'm meeting, can you put her at the Ritz Council? And she's just, she's great. So, so, yeah, I had an opportunity to meet with her there and so, yeah.
I think both of, both your backgrounds, so, you know, one of the hardest things that it's left is reduction of communication opportunities. Because we now have a little hype on our arms, just, you know, it's a splinter. So your communications side, that background and then financials, it's like they, the cultural condition is, is, um, mostly funded by the state, right?
Yeah.
And has their marching orders. That's why, you know, Patrice just runs with it and we help out. And that is, is a lot of it is from the state. And so your, your backgrounds are very well developed with that too. So.
It'd be really nice to hear about France instead of.
Yeah, it's good.
Thanks.
Question.
I do not have a lot of questions. Thank you.
And again, you're gonna have to get out of those.
Yeah.
Those, nothing else? Entertaining.
Look to point, the following to the cultural, city cultural impact for two hundred and three years, which was all successors named, up to this end, which should be by.
We've got the stand there all second, Harrison, all those in favor? Aye. Well, I am unanimous. Welcome aboard. Fun. That should, that's always fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, speaking else, I, all right. All right, uh, next, uh, Sebastian Booth, SCIU, eight to eight. Uh, so you not dragging, Mr. Robert.
Laura.
How are you?
Yeah, how are you?
You know, doing really well, or still, again, those just set up, the folks that come forward to help out are freaking proud of them. All right.
Eric.
This. All right. What, we have a bar, so we'll do this.
So, um, we have been negotiating for successive contract with a number of our units, units. So, um, AMS, which is the management union, uh, TOSCA, which is the government union and dispatch. And we have reached a agreement with both AMS and TOSCA, the management and the, yeah, technical union. And, uh, created MOAs, which have been ratified by both units. So I'm here to present those MOAs to the, to the board for the, um, review and approval. So, um, again, we've been negotiating with the both, both units, uh, SCIU, AA, so we're negotiating at the same time. The, um, both units have very similar proposals. So I think what I'll do is just maybe talk about what was common between the two bargaining units. And then I kind of split it a little bit and talk about what might have been different. But, um, so ultimately, we, we agreed to, um, call this for the both units of three percent. The FY twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. This is a three-year contract, beginning July first. Um, so that three percent is, is, uh, in keeping with, with what we agreed with some other unions, laborers, for instance, fire department. Uh, so, uh, within those sort of parameters. The other, another significant proposal that the union had was that we add a step and drop a step to the revenue scale. This is something that, that is relatively common, possible with different unions at times. Um, sometimes there's benefits to, to the town to do something along those lines. Um, one of the things that was probably most critical to the town is there's a, there's an article in both contracts that basically prohibits us bringing new hires into the bargaining, bargaining unit at a step higher than a step three. And that's been indicative for us at times. It's sometimes about this great ideal candidate that we want to bring in. But, you know, because of where they're coming from, we're not able to get them in because we're not able, we don't have as much discretion as we want to. Typically, we're hiring a lower on a, on the scale anyways, but at times that may occur. So, so it was important for us that we, yeah, it's changed the, that it gave the town more discretion and more that I saw one. Simultaneously, the, the, the union had also got a add a step, drop a step. So we sort of coupled those together. We got our language doing, ultimately meets a restructuring of the, the wage scale. So that we would, you know, getting add a step, drop a step, and we had the discretion that we wanted. So. Um, the other advantage sometimes for the talent of the add a step, drop a step is that, again, it just raises the floor a little bit for those new hires. And it helps us with that recruitment efforts. And also, you know, some of the people who have been here for a little bit longer, they might have reached the top of that scale. But this is like one more step for them to, to, so, uh, so we were ultimately admirable to that. So some of the other, other language changes that we had that were similar between the two units, um, one was sick leave. Um, currently the language said that, that employees could use up to three sick days per year to pay for family members. Family member, we've increased that to five. Um, we had language in both contracts that basically offered a specific maternity leave for female employees, but excluded new fathers. We were not particularly crazy about having language that like was specific to a gender. You know, we really wanted to kind of just, you know, extend that to new fathers. So we changed that language so it's, you know, it's a, I don't think that's supposed to, so, um, it's pretty uniform, uh, acceptance of that idea. Uh, one other proposal, uh, policy that we changed was a modern alcohol policy. We had regular getting in the garden, you know, what do we do if someone comes? We, we exhibit, someone exhibits alcohol or drug abuse in the workplace. Again, not common issue with these bargaining units, but if it does happen, we wanted to have rules that actually had some substance to it. Didn't have, it wasn't a lot of concrete good language in yet. So what we did is, is, and both the union and the town have the same thought that we needed like a vote, something happens, what do we do? In the laborers' union, that bargaining union has some really good language and you just mirror that. So really, it's a very sort of compassionate, holistic approach to kind of how we deal with that issue. Talks about sending them to treatment, allowing them to do sick time, uh, giving, getting women on strike. Uh, so it's compassionate approach, but at the same time, there's consequences to someone who repeats the behavior, or is not going in to, to, to seek treatment. So we were much more comfortable with having very concrete language that allowed us to, to know that, you know, what are the steps we're going to take? Not necessarily when it happens, just us trying to figure out what we do now. So those were the, the primary, um, articles that were common between the two bargaining units. Um, there were a couple that were different between the two units. TOSCA, the medical union, we didn't negotiate some of the change that allows us to hire temporary employees. Uh, in the case of someone being normal on medical, we, uh, we can fill a vacancy, we can hire someone temporarily in that to help reach the gap. Um, that makes sense with TOSCA, not as much for the management union, but I know CISA didn't separate them necessarily. So, uh, we got it for TOSCA, um, with AMS, the management union. We also agreed that after twenty years that we would give them additional vacation time. This was something that was really critical to them. It's also something that I think you see as common, I think, with management unions, that that's one benefit that sometimes they'll get of, you know, maybe a, a, but a reunion, mostly because the sometimes long-term employees who come in with sometimes a lot of vacations that, by the time they get to us, you know. So, um, those were, I don't know, some sort of minor housekeeping changes. Those were the primary, um, changes to the, to the vocalities, what, uh, by the bargaining. Any questions done any of that?
Yeah, one, I'll open it up. I said, so. Approximately, I don't know, where's the background?
So TOSCA is thirty-five and AMS is twenty-five.
Yeah, questions?
Makes complete sense. I like the way you rewrote the, the, uh, the journal, the parental leave. And I also like the way you're handling the, uh, drawing alcohol use to the. Converse.
Yeah, I actually like the, I like all the suggestions that you've had. They're really good. And I think it really turned modernized the slow contract, if you will. Um, I did have a quick question. Didn't we approve an assistant senior center director? Would that be included in this contract? I can see that title listed.
Like, it, it will.
I saw a lot of other assistants, but I didn't see that.
No, it, it will. So it, um, we didn't add it in yet, uh, at this point, I mean, it's a, it's a brand new job. So, so one of the things that we have an obligation to provide with the union is the content of job description. So we're going through that process. We have to figure out whether they classify.
Okay.
Um, and we're looking, actually, I reached out to them this week. So, uh, I think it'll be for FY twenty-five. And we'll just then add it.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate professionalism is being added to the contract. Um, because in my opinion, you have someone who's not, who's got a greater alcohol problem, it's not just their problem. It's everyone's problem, regardless of how you're just so, and does the parental leave apply to adoptive parents as well?
Um, there's, there's, if someone that is, um, adopts, then covered by F and away. There, there's, there's family medical leave, which is spread global, there's mass maternity, which is safe. And then the contracts had a little contractual maternity leave. But, um, I'd have to look at that language, but my sentence is almost reversed to the, it's almost reversed to the child. I'm not sure when that contract was negotiated, but it was years ago, when it was only, you know, maternity. Yeah. You know, and, uh, but, uh, but I, I believe if it's a, it's a, an adoption, it's covered by F and away rather than contractual. That makes sense.
And that wasn't eventually the people that we need to stay in.
No, they hadn't, I'm not sure since adoption.
Excellent work, sir.
Thank you.
Excellent. Great, great questions. All right, so we need a.
I'm just going to approve of Dr. Barley's memorandum.
All right, Campfield, second.
Second.
Bye, Miss Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous.
Second.
So now, uh.
I would have thought the bar, the, 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 not to say, but we tossed about it.
Second.
All right. Campfield, second, Miss Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous. All right. Now we're on to, uh, the non-union classification plan. All right.
So this kind of follows, um, very long. So, uh, a few years ago, FY twenty-two, we actually, um, created a non-union, uh, classification plan. Uh, basically, a, a, someone said, you know, that the union salary schedule, uh, salary schedule for non-union employees. Um, and we, we, you know, we realized, recognized a couple of years ago that union employees were getting regular steps, increases in the fitness, so it wasn't as big for, so, non-union employees, which is why we created the scale at that time. Uh, at the time we did that, we communicated to board that the intent was, what we could do was apply whatever increases we were afforded to either AMS or TOSCA, we would apply it to these non-union scales. The scales are, there's really two scales. One is a more salient scale and the other one is alcohol. So what we were, uh, posing at this point is that we, uh, apply those increases that we just awarded of, of, to the, of AMS and to TOSCA, we would apply that to the non-union salary scale. So the same increases that we just spoke of would just be applied.
Questions?
How many people was that? I want to get that into abnormal list, okay?
No, I, it's a.
That would be too, too easy.
Six, seven. There's about eighteen salary, uh, and with, with hourly, I think it's probably around, it's probably about twenty, uh, that, that, that hourly. And again, it could be that they may be working less than twenty hours a week, so they're not union. It may be a position that's just not, like, the title, that's not recognized by any of the unions.
I was gonna ask that question.
It's, uh, staff in our office, doesn't the confidential, they have been positions that have given. So Michelle. Jen, actually. Sharon.
Well, I know there was a point where they weren't getting mensurant, like, increases because they weren't being, they didn't have a community target for them. So I think it's only fair to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, that, that's the, you know, the scale that we're gathering.
Yeah, I actually have one question on the rates. I noticed it was like two point five percent across the board for everyone except for one of them. It was a two point six and that was a global TV. It was a two point six and that was the cable TV recreation. And then I noticed two point six, two point four for the last one, the COA driver is retired off the staff for two of the years. So I'm curious, why two point six for step two for the cable recreation and then two point four? Why are those different?
Honestly, they, they shouldn't be. And wondering whether or not, like, sometimes what happens is just like rounding.
Is it a round? I wondered if it was a rounding issue, but then if you posted this to people, they would be like, well, why am I getting two point four and not two point five? Or why am I getting two point six and not two?
I, I know, I think those.
Well, actually, the two point six won't ask me the question. I'm gonna say two point four. They're gonna ask you the question.
Very honest employee.
I mean, it's, it's penny, but it's hourly, so it's gonna matter in the long run.
I mean, we, we can look further into that, let that's more sensitive, probably a round issue.
I think it's between the steps. It's not the overall total.
Right, it is, that's what you're talking about, it's the step differential.
Yeah, the step increase. So some of them, it's across the board, two point five, but then one of them, it's two point six and two point five the rest. And then I guess more of a concern is the last one, there's two, two point fours and the rest are two point five. I just think the employees who probably wanna know why are getting less, or it's perceived they're getting it.
You're doing the fraction plus.
It's still less.
And I wonder if that was one out to the thousands, what it was like.
Okay.
So, but I think it's a good point, I think it's a good question. We can, we can look at it.
Okay. I'm gonna put you on, feel free.
I just would like to say that I think it's, anytime you can take a non-union employee, give them future forecast of where they're gonna be, recognize that everybody deserves cost of living increases. I think it's a good professional move.
So I just, with the map, I think that two point four percent under the, the COA driver is inactive. I think that's actually higher than that, if I do that on it. So I just, I think it just, even potentially.
Will give you some credit. Give you some credit. You know they're gonna ask if you're.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just decreasing the line here often.
All right, good, I'll see you.
We've put up the fiscal twenty-five classification as amended for the non-union employees divided effectively from twenty first to twenty fourth. Could you, thirty, twenty-five?
Goodbye, Scantill, Ms. Conley, all in favor? Aye, is unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks. Don't see Joe, so assuming this is gonna be.
Sell you, too.
I think he needs to go. We should make.
He has a family emergency. Yeah.
With us, with contracts, creating watch and brothers.
So in our P K was issued, it was due back on May thirty-first for valuation services for fiscal twenty-five to twenty-nine. This is the evaluation of the real estate and personal property in town. There were two respondents, P K evaluation group, who is the current holder of the contract, and San Sucey Associates. San Sucey Associates, when they were scored, it had zero score because they were only speaking to utilities. They didn't do other property. And then P K evaluation had scored thirty. They also happened to be a, after he began scoring, he opened up price reports, they were also below the, at second one thousand five hundred. This is an R P, so it was based on qualifications. So the price, postal price standard to fourteen thousand three hundred dollars each year over five years. He has already budgeted, Joe, fifteen thousand for fiscal twenty-five, so the contract came in well within budget. He also had budgeted seventeen thousand five hundred for inspections, twelve hundred fifty structures, and you see the per diem, per diem period in price, which are the sightings as well. Thirty-five dollars for car sale for data collection, essential sixty dollars for car sale for data collection, commercial industrial, and sixteen hundred for competitive values when it gets challenged under our property. We have had a very good relationship with P K over the years, so Joe was really happy that I decided to submit all of those proposals.
And, and he's just over there, they're actually drawing out and doing some of the, the assessments and everything else, just. Questions, concerns? See them over here, over here, I will just give everyone a quick aside, I saw, and ran into Joe doing some evaluations and he talked about, you need a little bit of bedside manner. You know, just, someone's walking on your property, who are you? And this, just talking about making sure that, I get on the year, some of this is kind of really your job, so. Excellent.
We're then budgeted amount, so it's a good thing. Congratulations.
They have, from the four employees who could be assigned to us, the minimum amount of experience is twenty-three years, the maximum is over forty years.
So we have good personnel.
But they're really nice, and if not, it doesn't matter. Move to a warrant, contract P K evaluation group, they bought seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. Valuation updates and data collecting services in the town of Central contingent on annual appropriation. Mr. Gilmore, second.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye, is unanimous. All right, Mark, now you're up. Right, now we can construct these task force. Can I say anyone? Can I say someone?
Good evening.
All right, this is the, uh, Ratsports, Studio Tennis, for project, two million dollars, tell us where we are, what's happening.
Okay, so project went out to bid, we had two respondents, Argus Construction Port, we did the search notes, nice call. And R E D Sports, Lottland, bidding was quite tight, which is a good sign. On the base bid, there was about twenty thousand dollars separating the two. We'll take a look at alternates number one, two, and three, which are the lights, the bleachers, and fresh and second, and stuff closely speculatively. R E D was low or deep, Argus on price, no matter which one you select for the last bid. So R E D with their base bid of one point seven four and change, and the three alternates. Their total contract price comes out to two million, thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. We've done a lot of work with R E D in the past, they're a very reputable firm. R E D stands for Rob Derrick Delmonico, Derrick Delmonico is a resident in town. So I feel comfortable, you know, if you're looking to deliver high quality. Questions?
So this came in. Wow.
No, so, so the previous meeting, the previous, uh, select board hearing, that we're in.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, town meeting appropriated funds, we would have been able to do the base bid. But if we wind up into the lights and ultimately to agree, that's why we requested some of the, some of the toll. But with this number, if we sign this contract tonight, that reflects everything that we discussed in our last. So there it is, with that money from, it's all rather tall. That'll pay for the, the structured administration fees, those three alternates, and provide some contingency. That contingency is not used, it'll be returned.
So we took care of the, what the extra money we needed through that. So we're not here talking about more money.
No, we're not, no, we're good.
That's the only thing I care about.
We're all, yeah, we're good.
Prove.
And then the twelve years money is. One, two, one, two, and three. Or not, two and three.
One, two. It's all, it's all right there, it's all right there, not a problem. Yeah, I mean, I've done work with R E D, they're a good company. This is a, it's a pretty straightforward project. The only real unknown is where we start thinking the side of the hill of them comes to get through that. It's a pretty straightforward project. I'm a good old fellow using Indian bones. Do you have a question?
We've got this one board, put the contract between the town situated R A E Sports, which is a community tennis court project with a total sum of two million, very important, one one sixty dollars.
Second, by, uh, Miss Conley, seconded by Mr. Gilmore, come cut, all in favor? Aye, is unanimous.
Very much our wish, we would.
And I just want people to know this is called a city community tennis courts.
Definitely, yeah. Very cool. All right, Nancy, you're back.
Kim with Sean.
My best.
And Sean, let's talk, proof in, and spare pumps at the pump station.
So I'm gonna preface this one with, Kim and Sean is, even though one of these contracts will require a select board voting for fifty, we wanted the select board to apply on this defense. The funding source that would be used for these contracts is not budgeting. We transfer the town voted to transfer a hundred thousand dollars into the store apartment budget at the October special town meeting for their regional store study. Regional store study is not happening, and that hundred thousand dollars would close out. Will was very concerned about the Scantill's pump station that Sean was playing, and wanted to bring these two projects forward. I said no, Evan said no, then we talked about it, Jim, well, I can place a lot of that select board aside because ultimately you'll have to approve a year of transfer to move the money from technical services over to repair needs. Good day. Sean, what we're getting with tax, about others.
It wasn't part of the solicitation process, but I wanted to be sure this process before the end of the year. I think Nancy explained perfectly, funding sources, first. Gibson roofs.
Get both prepared with TRV contracts, one's TRV oh four, one's TRV oh one, both state contracts.
Extra fifty-three thousand. Both of these improvements are from the San Hills Pump Station, which is our largest pump station. One situation would have, and will speak in the Santills. They had attached a Google Earth image, it didn't manage to get up onto the roof yesterday with a ladder. If you wanna see some of the images, just show some of the books that's happening.
We got a garden there.
Yeah, they do have leaks in it that they do try to maintain, so it is something that's only gonna cause damages to some of the internal components of the pump station.
A little bit of that.
The plant was built, yeah. The building was put up in sixty-six. Whether that's the original roof and boiler, we pulled it up next. That would, you know, that would put it at sixty-eight years old. So we have no evidence from last time, James, we have no idea, or we never have.
Was it not the, this is fully assessed from facility school?
No, because it's a cross-station. It would be part of the super facility study.
Okay, so I'm just seeing quails up there, it's a natural beauty.
You know, that was one of the contractors that was up there at the time, most of the quails are inside. Inside the building, yeah. All right, and then, so then, let's, we'll talk about the boiler, and then, the real question for us is the. The boiler, we think, possibly, if you don't have any evidence last time, that boiler was in. I do not, I did look, a lot of the major components that were replaced in fifteen and eighteen were repaired. Edition pump, the building was built for three, two were only installed. So that third pump was installed, there was some electrical communication improvements that worked around the site, electrical improvements, data improvements, no improvements to the first. Also, that, so that boiler could be. The actual in business, it could look bad. The company is, I'm trying to get an A job.
So what happened that the boiler stopped working?
Um, you, you do need some type of climate control.
So that, so it would be a problem in the winter, or what if you, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what.
Yeah, most likely.
So it's a problem in the winter in freezing temperatures is when it's used?
Correct, it does heat the whole facility, there are three floors below ground you can't see. That's how, that's how heat this building is, and the, the ductwork does make its way all the way. We do have exposed plumbing on walls for raw water, not on the sewers. Of water in the.
So if the bill, if it freezes in the winter, how many people would not be able to get water out in San?
This is.
Or so, sorry, people would not be able to get, what's that for the?
What percentage of?
I guess I'm trying to understand what they.
Um, I think it's around thirty-five. Of that, twenty-seven are passed through this station.
Twenty-seven.
All the way from Surfside, Splash Creek, that gets pumped to Channing Pond. Channing Pond is another collection point that gets pumped to San Hill, which is this station. All right, we're talking twenty-seven, homes or streets?
Percent, if, if thirty-five percent of the town is sewer.
Twenty-seven percent of the town will be able to flush that water.
All right, so let's say this thing, bro.
I'm trying to understand that right.
Yeah, apparently, yeah, so let's say this, so this, what would happen? Is the sewer compacted? Is it?
Yes, it would, I mean, around.
It could come in your house and you press sewage in your.
Basically, all the way along the coast up to my, with this flex. So it'll take a while, but. We can, it's basically, we either transfer the money now, we do the work, or the money closes out, goes to store, we can't go, which is a free cash. And then at the fall town meeting, we go take the money out of the container, so we do it then, in a hurry, because it's gonna get cold, we gotta make sure we're done. So it's really the same money we're gonna be spending, it's just get it done now, or we can, or hurry it, worry about the cold weather, make sure loose sticks and everything's in shape, for the storm season, for the fall.
I think it's safe to say it's fine, past the view.
Yeah, I mean, that can, fails and that.
This is the pump station, two thousand eighteen, we had sent Will out, I, I talked to him, he said, it's flooded. So, it's, uh, it needs to be done, just do it now, do it later, really, maybe just do it now, again, it's the same money, just flooding while we're waiting.
I guess my only other question would be, is region on sewer system, it's not what I think it is, it's set.
Yeah, and.
You know, I say we, we use the money for a good purpose, rather than sitting on it, waiting for nothing to happen.
Well, again, it's, it's in his budget, as opposed to not, as soon as it closes out, then the area, so.
All right, yeah.
It, it, it's, it's well overdue, and you, not only is it convenient if, if this were to happen, as Susan referred to, things freezing, and, and all of a sudden, we've got our toilets down there. The actual damage to the system plan. as Susan referred to things freezing, and, and all of a sudden we've got our toilets down there, the actual damage to the system itself is also really top concern, so I'd say you should move on.
Can I just turn on your connection? You said you didn't consider this?
Well, because it wasn't like, so we're, you know, we're spending better funds waiting out, but I agree with that, that we're going to be, we're going to be doing this in the fall.
Yeah.
Well, there, so.
It's the same hundred thousand dollars, so move it now or grab it, fall.
Great.
I was very frustrated.
Sorry.
All right, sensing good, I have sensing agreement? No, I, yeah, yeah. Uh, uh.
Maybe a vote please, maybe two. Move to transfer from the available fiscal year twenty twenty-four general fund sewer enterprise and waterways enterprise private lines. As indicated on the provided spreadsheet to other general fund sewer enterprise and waterway.
That's, that's our next step.
Is it your next one?
That's okay.
I just got caught on the, that typical picture of the boiler.
That picture, yeah. Feel like, yeah. People at home, I feel like people at home.
There we go. Sixty, and then.
People at home should see this boiler.
Yeah.
Here, this is what the boiler looks like, people at home should see it.
All right, so move to a more contract, twenty-four SS twenty-eight Gibson Leaps Incorporated in the amount of fifty-three thousand.
There's the roof.
To replace the roof at the San Hill pump station at eighty-nine, Citu would have.
Second.
With Mr. Gilmore seconded by Ms. Antfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, it's sixteen.
Move to award a contract to adjusted burner systems incorporated in the amounts of thirty-seven thousand and seventy-five dollars to replace the boiler at the San Hill pump station at eighty-nine, Citu would have you, and purchase a spare pump for the station.
Right. Mr. Gilmore, second of all, he's second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did, I forgot, I thought people should see it, like, it's nice. The boiler, yeah.
Who's got it?
Probably, I think it's San Hills pump station, it's very nice, I'm sure. I get you all the nice spots.
Yeah.
Well, that's the big one, for the pool.
Thank you, I can't, it's not just enough.
All right, let's transfer.
Yes, now, now we can transfer.
Oh.
So remember, it's water enterprise. So.
We have just a, a few, the, and banter, just move things around, streetlights, things around the guy. Um, humidification, they probably don't need the pump that are there, uh, they may just be, need a couple hundred, but it was a little late, we have a few of the bags, just wanted to make sure they're covered. Um, and then the rest of them, it's all exploring, pouring up the bay, and then, um, waterways, uh, he's managing, it sees most hours, but just in case, we need to buffer there. And then the sewer that we just spoke about, and it's not a four hundred, it's a seventy thousand, it's a million, seventy thousand left on that line.
And for folks about this is, is that revenue neutral, essentially, this is.
It is.
It is, removing it, right, so, in here, then here. Right here. You don't need it over there, find it, move it, uh, it's just not to be utilized, so.
And the total transfer.
Basically, let's, let's edit it out.
And.
One hundred and sixty.
Overall, it's the, overall. From Evans, now, balancing out.
That's amazing.
That's neutral.
And you guys are getting a focus, that's how we're coming. So, come here, come here.
All right. Much seconds, everybody good?
Yeah.
All right, now we can do the, um, ready, uh, this one, how do you read this?
Move to transfer from the available fiscal year twenty twenty-four general fund sewer enterprise and waterways enterprise private line, as indicated on the provided spreadsheet, to other general fund sewer enterprise and waterways enterprise private line respectively, pursuant to match general, that match general. Let's take her. Chapter forty-four B. Law, chapter forty-four B, section thirty-three, to resolve multiple annual issues with unexpected costs from various departments.
Move from Mr. Gilmore, second, second five, Ms. Gil, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We can transfer.
It's, I saved the best for last, all right.
Thirteen hundred dollars.
Woo hoo, woo hoo. So annually, um, the town receives its share of ride share funds, so there's a surcharge of ride shares of twenty cents, they check that, we get that, that's. So, there were over thirteen thousand ride shares down to year twenty twenty-three, so our share is one million, if only, one thousand three hundred eleven dollars. It has to be used for, um, transportation purposes, so we're asking that you allocate the funds to roadway budget, and I got a nice little bill from T L Language for the monthly, well, that we can allocate to. And you have what we have received in the past, since it's been in the, this whole team received six thousand two hundred eighty-six, and we, in your handout practice, um, this came today, it's listed in all communities that receive these funds, and how many rides they have, so, it's just kind of like a, you can look at, you know, how many do you have, how many forecasts we have, how many didn't mark filled out.
No, it's in the back.
It didn't, it didn't arrive yesterday?
Oh.
I mean, yeah, it arrived today.
Oh.
So most of this is like, it's good for free for five minutes, for about fifteen minutes.
So this is if someone takes a lift or a new bird.
Yeah.
I think it's DoorDash, or something, I don't wonder.
Yeah.
Does.
Take it to ride share.
No, just a ride.
About to call it the ride share.
Yeah, you, you, you're like burger doesn't count as a ride.
You get your burger, because that's way more expensive than the ride share. There's still thirteen thousand. All right, it's free.
What did you think?
Yeah.
Do you also like a little disease service?
Yeah, it's the right here.
All right.
First line.
Love a motion.
Move, move to allocate one thousand three hundred eleven dollars to yours, or to the, um, the transportation network company funds to roadway.
All right, second five.
Second.
Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, next. Grain layer license, everything, there it works. Out of it. So we had a catch, it's through. Grain layer license, please.
Yeah, move to approve the renewal of the grain layers license with all good, yeah.
Mr. Gilmore, second of all?
Second.
Ms. Can't feel, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And then we have parking lot license renewal. Davis Van Blue Trust.
So, I have a question on this, where is the parking, is it in the Hummer? There's no, there's no actual, this is Hummer, yes?
Yes.
The Davis Van Blue. They, they come to us every year.
This is the only parking lot that we do that.
Where is it?
Right, if you're kind of down at the beach, right, you're left, it's a pay lot.
Okay. I was just curious, my, yeah, that's why, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's a Hummer, but you can still say it's.
All right, um.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
This is. It comes every year, it was done this every single.
So.
Move the select board move to renew the parking lot license for John P. Davis Real Trust for the twenty, the two thousand twenty-four season, with hours of operation Monday through Sunday, nine AM to five PM through Labor Day, pending workers' compensation activated.
All right, move, uh, Mr. Gilmore, you have another question?
Okay, no.
Okay. Move, and second five. Ms. Can't feel, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Now, I am sorry, since I spritzed up, I'm approving. Folks up here. Oh, you did it?
Oh, yeah.
So our, our mysterious vice chair will be able to make a motion to this year, basically.
Oh, I know.
And just approach.
Yes. So we've got some reappointments, these are all reappointments, move to reappoint.
Can you do them all in one?
Can you do them all as listed or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, yeah, and further, yeah, further.
Move to reappoint Susan Wright, Don Dwyer, to Annalise Cooper, for three years, and full successor to me, and you to reappoint the following to the education commission for three years, and full successor, um, Sitski Humphrey, Wesley, I know, Mary, Danaro, Marian, Aliko, Sue Casey, and Leslie Powers. Also, move to reappoint Brenda O'Brien to the cultural council for a term of three years, or to a successor's name, move to reappoint Karen Conley to.
The other Karen.
The other.
The other Karen Conley, okay.
Okay, what are these greatest ones? Of three years or full successor's name, move to reappoint Donald Lab as possible for a term of three years or full successor's name, move to, um, oh, move to appoint Joshua Summers, is that a new one? Okay.
He is our new veterans agent.
Oh, right, okay, sorry, yeah, I was, I thought they were all reappointments. Move to appoint Joshua Summers, custodian of veterans graves for a term of one year, and to reappoint the following to economic development commission for a term of three years. Sue Pizza, Adina Savage, move to reappoint the following North River Commission for a term of one year. Adrienne Gallagher, Karen Conley, and John.
Second. Move by, here's the second of all, Mr. Gilmore, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Please, on the board. Who has the A's? Would you like to?
Well, I, I'd just like to point out that, uh, here for the project, that their environmental approval from Mass and P A for the here for the project is yet another step along the way. Now, it's going to focus more on local board commissions that we weigh in, as well as the design, engineering, fundraising, et cetera, et cetera, but, and I don't know.
What?
I don't think I've heard very much, I'm not, I haven't, I mentioned that the income development commission, uh, survey of businesses, uh, of businesses is live now. Uh, I know until July first, they've got some good response already, uh, it's general, uh, survey of, you know, what they want, and that stuff you can see it on the website, I don't know what it is, so.
I'm just so you know, I researched with the help of Michelle, all of my committees. And I sent emails out to all the directors and for their notes off of our services. I appreciate the concept that we, uh, we're asked, um, you are planning, and actually, uh, give feedback as well as some challenges to some of the committees to, uh, get them to look off the dimes or anything. So that's what I'm hoping with that.
Perfect, thank you, yeah. Nancy, something I'd like you to repeat, but. I mean, this, this is always a weird time for, I, I had, oh, sorry, let you go.
No, you're fine.
Had the first meeting with the, um, Halloway, uh, shade, school, kind of, official name, school building assistance, Halloway Christian, let's.
And Christian Halloway School Building.
They need a, a better, uh, start, I'm sorry. Uh, they, 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 they're actually have some great, uh, meetings during the summer, getting feedback from teachers, and then also, uh, probably, that was a great meeting, uh, design aspects, names, but, we have also been very, uh, judicious on financial decisions, uh, insurance, but that was a good, good meeting.
I mean, I couldn't continue to update more, I've been making progress, uh, very hard working committee, um, so, um, inventorying the house, as well as the trails and signs, there's been signage added, um, since last meeting, to the trails, and, um, many people out there are up there, and, yes, signs, like we used to, for the diet lunch, the trails, um, the, there were people out there, it was like flash that they were painting, you know, right? Um, so it's starting to get used, which is, um, which is great, they also, um, applied for funds, um, twenty-five thou, twenty-five thousand to C P C to hire a historical architect to assess the buildings, market value property, and work with the application, this is like working on national register places. It was special, it's a specific, um, individual that does, um, books, so that is on the agenda for July eighth, C meeting, um, and that will then go on to the October town meeting, so there's been also progress.
Excellent.
It's beautiful up there.
Oh, my God, I, everybody go, go there, go to Martinville, yeah, and walk around, um, it's absolutely beautiful.
I hear a correspondence, please, yes.
Oh, yes.
Uh, well, one thing that I, last Sunday, I had the pleasure of attending the eighty-sixth annual Fireman's, um, Memorial Day Service, and, uh, Chief did a great job, everybody was there, just do, and, uh, a great event thereafter at the fire station of P A. Uh, it was just really nice that, uh, very, very, and such class, recognize their people, that's great, that, this type of stuff. To move on to correspondence, May twenty-ninth, a letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department Fire Service. Chief Mark Donovan, Thomas Citu, dear Chief Donovan, I'm pleased to inform you that the Thomas Citu has been awarded five thousand seven hundred dollars for the student awareness of fire education safe program, and two thousand four hundred dollars for the senior safe program to fiscal year twenty-four. The rest of the letter is more rules and how, uh, I have then, uh, June tenth, I think it's in your backup, you're cordially invited by the, by the Father John Murphy, Division Number Nine, of the Ancient Order of Primordians in America, to, uh, enough to celebrate our relocation to the store of Porch Park in Plymouth, Massachusetts. I think you have all the rest of it, if you want to look at that for backup, it gives you some history, um, you know, basically, a very old established charitable organization, uh, that promotes food pantry, et cetera, and food and power, so that's on, uh, that is actually on June twenty-second, we call the port, that the Porch Park, the rest, the Porch Commerce Center, my address is kind of blocked off in mine, but you can see where it is.
Uh, somewhere's on it.
Yes, it is, and Porch Park, and then lastly. Well, hang on, look, June sixth, dear all, we're delighted, uh, we've already heard about this, but we're delighted to extend a warm invitation to you for the Citu Sister City Santa Catarina, Del Foco, Cape Verde Committee, Second Angle, Cape Verde, and Independence Day Celebration. Join us on Friday, July fifth, from six PM to ten PM, at the Harbor Community Building, forty-four J Rock Road, Citu, as we commemorate Commonwealth Day's forty-ninth anniversary of Independence in Portugal. Pretty cool, following the success of last year's Independence Day event, where you're going to make this year's celebration even more remarkable. And sincerely hope that you can join us for what comes, it will be a fantastic evening, once our guest list is finally like, we'll share your event program with you. And then lastly, I think, I have a letter dated June seventeenth from the Cedar Point Association. Dear select board members, quite a few years ago, a former member of your board suggested we provide the town from time to time with a list of our contributions and donations we have made to the town of Citu, and other charitable organizations. From May one, twenty twenty-three, to April thirty, twenty twenty-four, we have made a total of two thousand two hundred dollars in donations to local charitable organizations, including the Trusco Associates, the Citu Food Bantry, the Citu Beach Association, the Citu Community Christmas. We've also made another six hundred eighty dollar donations to other out of town charitable organizations in memory of deceased members. Cedar Point residents spent countless hours throughout the summer during maintenance work, doing make. Cedar Point residents spent countless hours throughout the summer during maintenance work, doing ma- during, doing, during maintenance work on flower beds and watering and art park and the lighthouse, because our neighborhood is visited by thousands of visitors yearly. We feel it's important to have every booking is best throughout the years, throughout the year's signs, sincerely data, well, resident, best and key treasure. I think that's all I have for course partners.
Alright. Uh, cool, uh, getting that's motion. Moves to accept the minutes, uh, for the January, sorry, excuse me, straight up. Moves to accept the minutes for the June four. By twenty-fourth, the last word meeting.
Second.
Any second, I, I'm looking for the favor, aye, aye. Okay, now, we were gonna turn inside documents, but. Attorney Galvin is still on the North Shore, so he has confirmed for seven nine, and I sent him an update right before the meeting, he's had it previously, so. He's confirmed five weeks previously. He thought who went late would be here, but. What I thought like, so Tom, to the chairman. Go off to turn and. Next, uh, Gilmore, all those in favor? Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you.